Good evening, everyone. I am State Senator Troy Jackson. I am the Senate Chair of the Citizen Trade Policy Commission. And I want to tell you that we very much appreciate being here in Frampton tonight with not only the Citizen Trade Commission but the members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, Forestry. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening. The primary focus of this year is to gather public comment from the Citizen Trade Commission about a number of issues that are going to be affecting the state with the Trans-Pacific Partnership and other possible trade issues that are going to be coming up. And we're going to have Representative Tree give a brief overview before we take public testimony. But the main reason for having the public testimony is -- or for having the meeting is to take the public testimony for people to tell us how they feel about this, what issues are concerning them, and so we can go back and try and make the best efforts we can to let our federal elected officials know how important this is to the people in the state of Maine.
Okay, well, I don't want to delay things too much, but we've been advised it would be just helpful to members of the public to just give a little summary about what we're about and what this report was about. We're required to do what's called an assessment of trade impacts on the state of Maine every two years, a report basically. This is the report. It's on our website. And so every two years, we try to figure out what would be kind of an issue or issues that we should focus on for that time period. And we really have tried to be focused on issues that are of the moment. Right now, there are two trade -- big trading, actually, there's more than that, but there's two really big ones that we're focused on. One, Senator Jackson has mentioned, which is the Trans-Pacific Partnership. It's with 12 countries in the Pacific Rim. And that's been going on for about four years of negotiation. They're closing in on, you know, a few difficult issues. And then it's going to be heading off to Congress for Congress to decide what to do with it. That is an agreement that I think I should mention. We're here to take testimony on any issue relating to trade. And there may be people that have concerns around that. In the past, issues that have come up have concerned, for example, foodborne shoes and whether or not tariffs will be taken off imported shoes that are brought into the United States from Vietnam. That's an issue with the Trans-Pacific Partnership. In addition, though, there's another agreement that's being negotiated right now. It's called the Trans-Atlantic Partnership and Investment Agreement. And that is with the entire European Union, which I think is 28 countries, if I have that right. But anyway, it's a whole lot of countries. And it would basically be the biggest trade agreement out there in recent years. And for the assessment, we asked that our experts, which included both national experts from the Institute for Agriculture and Trade Policy and also the Maine Farming Trust, to give us a Maine perspective, take a look at how that agreement might affect agriculture in the state of Maine. And so in particular, we're interested in any reaction to that report or particular concerns around agriculture. And that's why we've invited the members of the Agriculture Committee to join the Trade Commission in this public hearing so that we can hear any public testimony. And just very briefly, that report raised a number of issues of concern and perhaps of opportunity as well. On the opportunity side, one of the things that's being discussed as part of those negotiations is whether or not to agree to something called geographic indications. We've all heard of Parmesan. It's actually based from a particular region in Italy. Should it be called Parmesan if it's made in Maine? That's an issue that's going to be a part of the Trans-Atlantic Partnership or TTIP. That could be a detriment to those who want to sell cheese and want to say it's Parmesan or feta or any of these others. On the other hand, maybe that could be an advantage if we want to say Maine blueberries, Maine seafood. So one of the things that we want to hear about is are there Maine products that we as a commission and as the Agriculture Committee should be going to our members of Congress and saying, "You need to make sure that these things are considered as part of the negotiations." Other provisions of the TTIP or the Trans-Atlantic Agreement that are potentially of concern are provisions that might restrict what state dollars could be spent on. We have programs called procurement programs where the state of Maine and every other state go out and say, "Well, we're going to spend our state dollars buying these things." And we want to buy it from certain companies that meet certain standards. And the question is, particularly in the food area, whether we can have those kinds of programs that say you have to buy a certain percentage, say, from local farmers, whether those would be restricted by this TTIP with the European Union. Because the European Union would like to have provisions in the treaty that say that, "No, you couldn't do that," or maybe saying that. One thing that we need to know is that all of these negotiations take place behind closed doors. So what is actually going on behind those doors, we don't really know. But we do know what people say publicly they'd like to see. And we also know that a number of the provisions have been leaked to the public, mostly from the European side. And so what we have indications about are that the Europeans very much want to essentially control what state governments and even local governments do in terms of their procurement policies. So this may be something that people have issues about. One other issue of interest to us, I know that the Ag Committee wasn't 100% in agreement on this issue, but it is state law now that we did pass for GMO labeling. And that is, of course, something we're waiting to see what happens in other states. But that is an issue. The European Union does have GMO labeling already. We do not in this country. And the issue is whether or not the state of Maine and other states might be prevented from adopting policies that go beyond what the federal government in the United States does, whether it's GMO labeling, whether it's pesticide standards, whether it's any number of things. Those are things that this agreement actually gets into. So to just sort of finish up, I would just -- and one last thing is also very important in Maine is our milk stabilization fund. That is something that we've had for many years. Fortunately, I don't serve on the Ag Committee or the Appropriations Committee that has spent apparently untold hours getting into the details of the milk stabilization fund. I think the thing to understand about that is it has been very, very effective, and this is all in this report, in terms of really maintaining family farms that are dairy farms in the state of Maine. And there is a concern that the way that is set up would be considered a discriminatory subsidy that couldn't be provided under this trade agreement. So I think one of the things to just know about these modern trade agreements is that although they include things about tariffs or not having tariffs, they also get very much into what we call domestic regulation, the laws and regulations of federal and state governments. And this is a big question, but whether or not we want to be part of a treaty that reaches down into this level of policies and basically dictates in certain ways what happens with that. So we are here today to hear about all of that. And we know also that there's many people that are very interested in the debate going on around fast track, which is basically the rules by which Congress decides whether or not it agrees to any of these trade agreements or not, and whether it'll be speeded up through Congress or whether they'll have a lot of time to debate it and to perhaps make changes. So we're here to hear anything about all of the above, and I will turn it over to my co-chair to take it from here.
Okay. Well, I'm just a bullbant, so I'm a organic farmer out in the town of Industry. And I'm a German plats and currier. It's kind of irrelevant for this, but part of my job is to maintain the genetic diversity in crop plants. And I'm also an author. Mainly, I'm just having a question about context here. Everyone here seems to be, whether legislative or NGOs, are all states. There's no one here that's Fed. And yet, we're talking about whether the thing goes at all. In other words, aside from tweaking the details of this thing, none of you guys has any more pull than I do as far as whether this goes or not. Am I correct about that? The reason we're having this conversation, this meeting, is to see what specific things that we want to grind our own axes and which things will or won't. Am I right about that?
Well, there's no doubt that this issue is going to be decided on the federal level. But this commission, even before I've been on it, there's some members that have been on it since inception, have been very effective in advocating for policies for the state of Maine on the federal level. It's actually had a number of members actually go to different states because other states wanted to understand what Maine was doing to be so effective on the federal level on these issues. So we feel, I think many of us and not all of us feel, it's very important for us to be able to talk about our sovereignty as a state and the things that are going to affect constituents in the state of Maine. This is one of the ways that we do it. We make sure that the public advises us on how they feel on these issues. And then we have, you know, had federal officials in front of us.
Serving on those are members of various industries. That's, you know, there's like 600 to 700 advisors, almost at least 600 are from industry. But there is one that is a committee of state and local government officials. And I have served on that for over three years. And I can't say that my advocacy on that has necessarily changed these policies. A lot of it is still in secret. I will say my voice has been quite loud, at least. And I do think also that our members of Congress, partly because we have this commission, which doesn't just fell off about stuff based on what we read on the Internet, but actually commissions reports from experts, comes in with a certain level of expertise and I think, you know, respect that you're not going to see from a lot of other states. So, yeah, in some ways, this is a system that's kind of rigged against people at the state level in the sense that it is being done at the federal level and it's mostly being done behind closed doors. But I do feel that this process that we have, and we are required to have two public hearings a year to both get testimony but also to tell people about this, I think that that has been helpful. And I think that we need to keep doing this because part of making sure that these agreements, if they are concluded, are done in a way that's fair, is to have it out in the public as much as possible. And that's where we are really playing a role right here now. So I think that, and from what you said, it sounds like the things you do, like crop diversity, is actually very important and very related to the agricultural provisions that might be in these agreements. So I think you should feel that your concerns are very legitimate and are something that we would like to take to Washington if you have more to say about those.
But I guess the real answer to my question now is as far as it's sort of a done deal, the best we're hoping for is to tweak.
No, I don't believe that. And I'll tell you why.
I mean, other than talking to Susan Collins and Angus King, I have to try to twist everyone. Tell me why, yeah?
Yeah, I don't believe that. I mean, we don't really know. But, you know, there certainly were not the votes to do the fast-track process before the election because there were enough members of Congress that knew that their constituents didn't approve of that.
Yeah, the fast-track authority brings a trade agreement to Congress, and their only alternative is to vote it up and down without the ability to put an amendment on it. Now, if the state of Maine, if they were going after our lobster and our milk and stuff like that, they wouldn't be able to put an amendment on a bill which would benefit the state of Maine or whether in Oregon, or whatever it is in Oregon, whatever state it is, the authority just says up and down, and that's it. And, you know, when you get these international trade agreements, they're hundreds, if not thousands, of pages long. And I don't even have the confidence in our United States Congress and Senate that there's anyone there that actually has the ability to look over these international trade agreements and actually have the ability to say whether it's good for the United States of America or any country. And, I mean, we've been dealing, I've been dealing with this. I was fortunate enough to actually be a co-sponsor of the bill, got the bill on. I've been on a commission basically every year except for probably one. And this scares the hell out of me because when you take a look at it, whatever trade agreement you have, if you have a trade agreement with some three countries over there and three countries over here, and they got this and this one, and they got this and that one, they don't, they don't, "We like what we have here, we don't like what we have here." Eventually, it's like a spider web, and everything gets woven into everything sooner or later till it's game over and corporations have more say than the Supreme Court, the United States of America, and the lawmakers and stuff.
Well said.
I had planned to testify this evening, but my name is Cynthia Finney. And I used to say I lived in East Livermore, but our post office is closing and Google Maps has deleted us. Because I live in Livermore Falls. And --
New Sharon.
Not anymore.
Formerly.
Yeah, formerly from New Sharon. And I'm also the president of the Maine Fair Trade Campaign and a former member of the, a former representative of the Citizen Trade Policy Commission. I'm speaking mostly off the top of my head and also mostly as myself, a citizen and taxpayer in the state of Maine. But I want to thank the commission for doing this, the focus on agriculture, because it's a, I think it's a really important issue for Maine. Maine is, Maine is in a position of having a lot of small and family farms still, which many places don't, that play an important role in our, in our economy. And at least some people who actually study these things and look at them, there was a, I think it was the Brookings Institution and a couple other organizations did a study a few years back that if, you know, if we chose to be, because of our geographic position and the amount of land that we still have in agriculture and our geographic location in proximity to certain large metropolitan areas, we could actually rebuild agriculture to be a significant part of our economy if we chose that as a policy path as a state. And having learned what I've had the opportunity to learn by virtue of having served on the commission primarily and understanding the ins and outs of some of the provisions in these, the trade agreements and how they work and what they're designed to do, I think in terms of agriculture, it's really important for us to preserve the ability to, as a state or even as municipalities, make policies to support that if we choose to. I would, I'm not in favor of something that ties the hands of a town that decides, for example, that at their schools, they want some of their tax dollars to be supporting local food for the school lunches for the children. If the people of a town decide that they want to support the agriculture that way and feed their children that way, I do not want to have an international trade agreement that's been signed and negotiated and whipped through Congress without the ability to debate to tie their hands to do that. I think those are important policy decisions that we get to hammer out together, and I want us to have the opportunity to do that and to decide yes or no, not to be told no, just as one example. And so, so thank you for looking at this topic, and thank you to the Agriculture Committee for stepping in to listen tonight. Oh, I also wanted to say, I have, you know, a very good friend of ours who is a sixth-generation dairy farmer, large dairy farm in the state of Maine. And I invited him to come tonight, but he's not here, you know, kind of feels this is a little over his head. But part of why his farm makes it is because of the milk price supports. And I listened to John Piatti's testimony that he gave to the commission in December about ways that what happens on the international market impact our local prices for milk that who even knew, you know, even, it was revealing to me when he talked about how organic farmers, many of whom are kind of outside of the, you know, the normal bureaucracy for the price setting, but how even that would get affected by changes that could happen in the powdered milk price on the global market. So I know that his farm makes it because of some of the price supports and things like that. And I know that it runs on a thin margin, as I imagine most farms do. And so to sort of turn over our ability to support our farmers that way in the, in the interest of just leaving the market open so that the biggest and strongest can prevail, I don't think is in the interest of our state because that's not who's in our state.
Stories, but I do, one thing about working in this area, and this goes to your question about talking about colonization, and if you are working on the trade issue, you do end up actually connecting up with people all over the world. And so I, at least by email, I'm connected to people all over the world. So just today, I opened up an email from someone in Chile who had an opportunity to ask that very question, what came out of this meeting in Beijing? And so I just read that. And, you know, I don't know how accurate it is, but it was asking a number of the issues that we have had concerns about, one of which is the pricing of medicines and whether or not anything was done about that. But these were, I think, trade officials in Chile who had a public meeting to talk about what happened, which we don't do a whole lot of that in the U.S., but sometimes you learn more from other countries. And so the first thing that they said was, "No, nothing really happened. It was a political meeting. It wasn't really a meeting where anything happened." And then there were a lot of questions about different things that we have raised questions about. One of them was medicines that's still unresolved. Also, another big issue is the tobacco issue. And the statement on that was, "That's also unresolved." Well, the reason it's unresolved is that it's controversial, and people like people in Maine and people in this room have actually been raising their voices about it. So that's an indication that, you know, we still could win on those issues and keep some of that stuff out of the agreement. So that's the word I heard today, not that much really happened. But I will say that, you know, I've had some more, you know, the cleared advisor meetings where they bring you in and tell you stuff. And I will say that it seems that many more of the chapters are resolved or were, say, a year ago. So it does feel like it is closing in more, which is concerning because there are provisions that are very worrisome. But those are two that remain, I think, unresolved.
If you just Google Citizen Trade Policy Commission, you'll find our website, okay? And we have what we call an interested parties mailing list. And if you want to be on that mailing list, you will hear about everything that the commission is involved in. All of our scheduled meetings, our agendas, summaries of what we've done, all the letters that the commission has decided to write, who the commission has met with, what speakers we've had. It wasn't mentioned, but leadership of the commission met specifically with Senator Angus King and his staff regarding these three trade agreements. And I think it's fair to say that that was, it was an interesting meeting, and I believe that Senator King really listened to what leadership of the commission had to say about these treaties and how it might affect the state of Maine.
There are some good things about trade agreements. You know, we do want to be fair, fair in our dealings with other countries, and we want to be able to export products from this country to other countries without tariffs, urban tariffs. But I think the key thing, and it is a complicated thing to understand, is this investor-state arbitration process because that's the enforcement mechanism. And not all countries want it, but we hear that our trade representative is pushing for it. And that enforcement mechanism gives the 16,000 corporations that are now doing business in Pacific Rim countries, Australia to China and all those countries, it gives them authority to go to court and dismantle our regulations as they affect their competitive edge in this country.
Is this the remedy, and this is why they're called investment partnerships, it's almost you look at as a lost profits?
Yes.
Isn't the remedy that the United States has to pay if they lose, they have to pay the lost profits to the investor? And so, for example, if you have some protections for the dairy industry, agricultural industry in Maine, for local acquisitions for schools and other places, and a foreign entity could come in and say, "Well, I could, I could give that, I could sell that milk to a school at substantially less, or maybe a little bit less, but I'm not allowed to bid because I'm not a local vendor." So they go to arbitration, and they win because those are the facts. So the Maine agricultural industry still provides what they do at kind of a subsidized basis or at an increased cost to the schools or the hospitals. And the remedy is, if they go to these tribunals, the remedy is that they have to pay, the United States has to pay for those lost profits. In other words, for the foreign entities' investment. In other words, they didn't get the bid. Well, we don't know, and this is one of the things that's come up, we don't know if the federal government has to pay this, are they going to turn to the state and say, "Okay, you reimburse the federal government?" And as far as I know, we've never got any indication from the federal government as to whether or not they're going to try to pass this on down to the states. That's one issue. The second issue is the lack of transparency. And the excuse, I'm sorry, the explanation, I interpret it to be an excuse for the lack of transparency is these trade associations, there are many trade associations, because as the Attorney Journal said, there's thousands of companies, but you don't want to listen to a thousand companies flapping their gums. You'd rather listen to the trade associations rather than listening to something a thousand times over. Listen to the trade association. In essence, they're going to represent the members of their trade association. The reason I got, when I first started on the commission, for lack of transparency is because they're giving, how should I say it, confidential information, confidential financial information to the trade negotiators, and they don't want that out there. Well, I think that may be, maybe 1% of it because you think most of these entities, particularly the United States, are public entities. And if you've ever looked at an annual report of a 10K of the Securities and Exchange Commission, if you looked at some of the reports of the state agencies, it's, it's very detailed information. If you've got the guts and the, and I'm a CPA, and I used to do this stuff. I used to do 10Ks. And the detailed information that's available, if you've got the guts and the time to go through it, it's quite detailed and, and very enlightening. So, so here you have, they say, "Well, we can't be transparent." And yet, if they need something, they're very transparent, pretty transparent when they go to get a trademark. So anyway, so this is where I sit as a businessman. And the other thing I'd like to have Sharon, when we talk about the Maine Citizen Trade Policy Commission, it's really been a leader in this area. And was it three years ago, four years ago, the commission got the attention of the Japanese? And I don't know if you remember in the news, but they hustled a reporter over from Japan to interview the chairs of the commission to see what's this upstart state doing, causing all this trouble? And it was about three years ago, we had members of Vermont, I think it was New Jersey and Connecticut, coming to see what Maine Citizen Trade Policy Commission was up to. So I think you've got to say that the chairs and the people that are members of the commission have been very active, particularly the chairs, because we kind of wander in and nod and give them our approval and raise our hands and vote. But they're really the leaders. And although this year, we're kind of concentrating on agriculture, in prior years, we've had a focus on other issues because it's so comprehensive and it's so far-reaching. There's no way this commission could focus on everything under the sun that's going on down there. So when you talk about lack of transparency, sir, it's very hard for you to comprehend since we're supposed to be a democracy. But it is, there's no transparency, and this stuff is literally done behind closed doors.
Three farmers here, two are on the side of Maine. I'm just trying to remember, farmers, and one on the very back there, two, I guess. There are 8,173 farms in Maine. The number's gone up a little bit. Almost 1.5 million acres of land is in farms in Maine. Average size, only 178 acres, relatively small farm compared to the agriculture, agribusinesses we see in the Midwest. But the four points of this report, which Representative Tree brought up at the very beginning, remain the key points of interest for farms here in western Maine and elsewhere. That is -- That is the public safety, food safety issue, whether or not any portion of the trade agreements might undermine our food safety and inspection programs. Two, the public procurement issue, whether or not the trade policies or treaties will undermine our state public procurement policy, prefer local farm products. And three, the dairy issues, which Representative Tree mentioned, and that's really important to this area. We have a lot of dairy farms. And whether or not the milk stabilization fund itself will be threatened, which in turn threatens the underpinnings of our dairy industry in Maine. And fourthly, geographical indicators. And along those lines, you might be interested to know, that affects the wine you drink. There are treaties, the World Trade Organization has determined that only certain wines, that the names of certain wines will be respected in trade agreements. So if you want to grow grapes and bottled wine that you want to call Maine Bordeaux, you won't be able to do that, or Maine Merlot, or Maine Port, because those names are protected. And if you want to file a trademark application and have your wine called Bonsols, whatever backyard grew, you may not be able to have that trademark respected in another country unless it's on a select list that the US trade representative would have to give his informatory to. So these are serious issues. Very serious.
I'm Pamela McGathlin.
Unannounced. Excuse me, sorry.
I am the Director of the Bureau of Labor Stands for the Maine Department of Labor.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Carriganis, and I'm with the Department of Environmental Protection. Excuse me.
I'm John Palmer. I represent small business on the Citizens Trade Policy Commission.
Represent Russ Black, represent District 90 for a couple more weeks, and then one, District 114, I serve on the ACF Committee.
Jana Mills, Attorney General. I serve on the commission. Diana Blue Brown, Florida.
Good evening. I'm Representative Craig Hickman. I serve District 82, soon to be District 81, Metro and Beachville, and I serve on the AG Committee.
Good evening, and I'm State Senator John Patrick. I represent Senate District 14, which is 30 towns and townships in western and northern Oxford County, and the town of Jay in Franklin County.
I'm Jim Dill. I'm the House Chair of the ACF Committee. I represent District 14, which is Old Town in Indian Island, soon to be Senator, District Fog, which is from Vezey to Middle York.
I'm Sharon Trew. I'm very glad to be here in Farmington tonight. I represent House District 79, which is Hallwell, Farmville, and West Gardner, and I will until December 3rd, when I am sadly tomorrow.
My name is Bernard Iar. I represent nine towns in northeastern Arustah County. I've been on the Citizens Trade Policy Committee for eight years, and I also will be termed out of the State House as a state representative in about two weeks. It's been a wonderful trip. This has been a really interesting committee, and I'm going to miss all of the excitement of the rest of the committee.
Evening, everyone. I'm Don Marie, and I represent two towns in York County, Hollis and Byssell.
Good evening, folks. I'm Jeffrey Cave, representing District 85, which is the community of Scout Egan, and then in two weeks, representing District 107, which will be Scout Egan and One Road in East Madison. Thirty-six voters.
I'm Bob Sauce here. I represent House District 5 in Prescott, and soon to be representing District 147 in Prescott. And I'm on the ACF.
Good evening. I'm Jay Wadley with the International Association of Machinists, and I represent labor on the Citizens Trade Policy Commission.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Cole. I'm from CEI, the Community Development Corporation in Wiscasset. I represent economic development organizations on the Citizens Trade Policy Commission.
I'm Mike Hirsch. I'm on the commission as well. I represent nonprofit environmental organizations.
Good evening. I'm Joel Case. I'm an emergency physician in central Maine, and I represent health care on the Citizens Trade Policy Commission.
Lock, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Lock Kermeier. I'm the staff person for the Citizens Trade Policy Commission.
I'm Karenette O'Drillan. I'm nonpartisan staff. I did staff the ACF Committee, soon to be staffing the Transportation Committee.
My name's Michael O'Brien. I'm new at OPLA, also nonpartisan staff, and I'll be staffing ACF and helping out HHS.
Okay. Earlier this year, we were charged with my annual assessment of the Trans-Pacific Trade Partnership, TPP, and we had the Maine Fireline Trust do an assessment. Like I said, Representative Trew is going to give an overview, which she's completely, does a great job at, and after that, we'll start the public hearing. Representative Trew?